I call to order the regular meeting of Board of Education. I now reconvene the regular meeting of Board of Education at 6:00 PM with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, Naught and Shaw present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Pat?
The board met in closed session from 4:00 PM to 5:43 PM regarding student discipline matters and public employee performance evaluation superintendent. No action was taken which required public disclosure.
Thank you, Pat. We're now on to the Pledge of Allegiance and leading the Pledge of Allegiance tonight is Frank.
All right, hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Best pledge ever.
Thank you, Frank. We are now on to recognitions. Our first honor tonight is for Sidney Merrich. Is that how you say your? March. Sidney, March. Sidney, can you please join me at the podium?
Good evening, everyone. I'm super proud to introduce Sidney March. She is a member of the Don Lugo FFA where she has served in our program for four years. Four years ago, I met Sidney when she attended our horse show, Chino Fair Horse Show, and she made the decision to become a transfer student to Don Lugo and attend our program and we are so thankful that she did. Her freshman year, she set a goal to become a California State FFA Officer and throughout the next four years, we have worked very hard. She has worked very hard and served as many leadership positions throughout the years and she's going to share a little bit about her experience at state conference this year and what she will be doing serving as the next California State FFA Treasurer.
Thank you for that wonderful introduction, Ms. Kirtin. If you did or did not know, Ms. Kirtin is my FFA advisor who's been with me for four years and I'm super grateful to have her support in this role as an FFA State Advisor or State Officer. So, being involved in FFA, I decided in my freshman year that I wanted to run for state office and the actual process of running for state office, while it was only four short days, it was actually for long years of coming to this point. I served for Orange County, Southern California, and now for the state of California. Learning through FFA, the leadership development and career success is something that our program should be extremely proud of and something that I am extremely proud and blessed to represent. And that being said, this year in California, I get to serve and be everything that I was involved in, I get to provide for students. So, being able to provide those conferences, those experiences and those opportunities for students to grow within this program and advocate for agriculture as well.
Thank you. As you can see, Sidney is an excellent student and she's setting the example. We are so very proud of you and watching your story through Instagram and just reading all the posts. We know you have a great team behind you and we're grateful for that as well and for the leadership that helps you. Thank you for taking the lead and we just wanted to present this to you tonight. (APPLAUSE). I guess I'll just stay right here. We had another award tonight for hidden trails and it was a little bit of a hiccup because I guess I didn't give them the exact date. So, I want to honor them at another board meeting. I don't want to take that away from them, but I don't want to forget that we were going to do that tonight, so we'll take them, we'll bring them back at another board meeting. Oh, and by the way, if they haven't left, they can leave now. They don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but we're now on to comments from our student representative, Ms. King.
Good evening, President Shaw, members of the board, distinguished guests and audience. Today, I want to start by thanking all those here in opposition of Agenda Item 2A1. Your support of the children and students in our district is not going unnoticed. Next, I'd like to talk about some of the construction going on at Chino High School. Not so much on the school, but the streets around it. The roads are very, they just like tore up half the road. The roads aren't even. I feel, as a student driver, I feel very unsafe driving there. They narrowed down the roads with cones to the point where like buses can't even turn into the school. They have to fully stop construction, move cones, everything like that, which is causing students to be late because the bus have to run late. Also, just again, as a driver, I feel like my tires are going to pop just driving down the street. The streets again are narrowed and the sidewalks got torn up on one side, which is causing our students to have to walk in the street, which is causing cars to have to like speed up and drive next to them or just having cars to go slower, which again is causing students to be late. Sometimes they have to pause construction or they have to pause like the traffic to just move like the construction vehicles around, which again is causing students to be late and again, it's just unsafe in general. All three of our entrance, at first it started with one side of our school being under construction, then the other, and then the third, which blocks all three, not blocks, but there's construction going on in all three of our entrances of our school. And again, it's really hard to get in, lots of traffic, just unsafe. Our student parking lot in the back, this year we have a lot of student drivers. I don't know what it is, but there's a lot and their back two of our parking lot are completely full with construction vehicles. Today, I showed up maybe two or three minutes late and I took like the last parking spot and there was still people coming in afterwards after me. Also, our county special needs class is surrounded by construction. I just don't think it's safe. Again, the sidewalks, summer's a month away. I feel like obviously there's something we could do now, but if we could have waited or in the future do something to prevent this from happening. Our special needs students also take walking features, which is crucial to their education and the way they learn and they can't really do those or if they are, it's not safe because now they have to cross over construction or unsafe roads or walk on the middle of the street opposed to walking on the sidewalks. So, again, I understand there's not much that we could do right now because the roads are already torn up, sidewalk's already gone, but just in the future, kind of making sure that if we do one of those, maybe one street at a time or again, summer's a month away. So, I feel like, you know, I don't know if that's something I guess, but yeah. Next, about two weekends ago, on March 25th, at Chino High School, we hosted a swimathon for our former teammate Melissa McGaughn. We raised over $1,000 in donations for her through shirts and everything like that, like entry fees. It worked out really well for everyone that went. We really, really appreciate it because it's really a big help to her family. On April 25th, we are hosting our Team Melly Blood Drive. It's going to be our last blood drive of the year. At the last blood drive, Melissa went to donate blood and her cells, her cells came back as abnormal. When they look into more tests, they found out that she had leukemia. So, Melissa wants everybody for this blood drive. Again, we're donating all the funds to her and she wants to do this blood drive kind of to promote not only saving others, but as a chance to save yourself. Before going to the blood drive, she had no symptoms whatsoever and if she didn't donate blood, it could be looking a lot worse for her. So, again, we encourage not only just to save someone, but to save yourself because it really can. It's going to be from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It's going to be running longer than our other ones. Chino High School students are able to donate till 3:30 and after that, it's open to the general public. We're going to be having everything posted on our social medias over the next few weeks, so please look into that if you're eligible to donate. And if you can't make it to this blood drive, I recommend that everybody could donate on their own time as well through live stream. They have many different blood banks all around the area and it's not hard to make an appointment and stuff like that. Last week, on March 31st, the remainder of most college decisions came out. I want to congratulate any seniors who go out into colleges or made any other commitments after, for after graduation. We actually have our valedictorian here tonight who got into Yale last week, which is really exciting.[540.16][540.16](APPLAUSE). Congratulations, Dani Amora, and I thank you for speaking tonight. Besides that, thank you and I hope you enjoy your weekend. If you guys celebrate Easter, then happy Easter.
Thank you, Ms. King.[558.12][558.12](APPLAUSE). Next up are comments from our employee representatives. We have Brenda Walker with ACT.
Good evening, President Shaw, school board members, Superintendent Enfield, District Cabinet, and members of the Chino Valley Community and guests. I just have a couple of announcements or things to say tonight. Number one, every year, ACT offers scholarships to the graduating seniors of our members. I just want to remind students that the applications are available on our website and the deadline to get your application and all the required documents to us is Friday, April 21st. Number two, on behalf of the members of ACT, I want to thank all the district employees who have stepped up to actively keep students and staff safe, especially during the recent increase in altercations on campus and also attending to repairs. And number three, lastly, please know that the association is very interested in this school board's perspective and discussion regarding Assembly Bill 1314 and how it will not only impact students, but how it will impact teachers. That's it for tonight. Thank you, have a good one.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker.[651.12][651.12](APPLAUSE). Do we have Dani Hernandez from CSEA tonight? No? Okay, then we're, we'll go to Ms. Barbara Bearden from CHAMP.
Lot of new hardware tonight. All right. Good evening, President Shaw, school board members, Dr. Enfield, Cabinet and Chino Valley Community. Earlier this week, schools celebrated National Librarians' Day. If you know a librarian, be sure to thank them. Many librarians are responsible for instilling a love of reading in people. Parents, the testing season is approaching quickly for elementary and junior high schools. I've already noticed that Chino Hills High School has started their testing season. To give your children the best opportunity to demonstrate what they know, please encourage them to go to bed early. I know that's not always easy. Eat a great breakfast with protein and ensure they have a good morning by preparing everything such as their clothes and lunch the night before. Let's build on the success we experienced last year. CHAMP members, please remember we are meeting next Thursday at 4:45 PM. Please be on the lookout for an email with important updates about high school scholarships and the AXA Region 12 Spring Celebration. Thank you, President Shaw and Dr. Enfield, for taking the time to visit our school sites. During your visit, I loved showcasing the great work in our classrooms. One of the best parts of our work is when we are in the classrooms or interacting with our students. I hope you all have a wonderful weekend. If you get tomorrow off, enjoy the long weekend and have a happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[750.25][750.25](APPLAUSE). We are now on to comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Pat, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items?
Five on non-agenda items.
Okay. Speakers will be called in the order the request was received. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Once the board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind that the board typically does not respond to comments during this time on the agenda as it's reserved specifically for public comments. Individual members may respond during board comment at the end. Mr. Cruz, will you please explain the light system?
Speakers, you have three minutes to address the board. Limit remarks to new points. Begin comments at the green light. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. The red light means your time is over. Please adjust the microphone as necessary. Please refrain from making comments while speakers are at the podium and please note that the Board Policy 1312.1 outlines the procedure for anyone who wishes to file a complaint against a school district employee.
Jim Gallagher, followed by Oscar Avila, followed by Adrian F.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Enfield, staff, fellow residents. Also, I just want to wish a blessed Passover, Ramadan and Easter to all of you. I've spoken on this issue before. This is a non-agenda item. The number one cause of death listed by CDC among children ages one to 19 in the United States, according to the CDC, is gun-related violence, which beats out traffic-related and drug or poisoning-related deaths. Some of them happen in public places like schools or shopping centers. Others sometimes happen behind the closed doors of a home. Some are motivated by personal grievances while others are terrifyingly random. The point is, a nonprofit research group that tracks gun violence noted last, this past year already, we have 130 gun deaths in the United States. Last year was 647. Now, I know I've spoken about this before and I've also suggested a top-down, bottom-up threat assessment for this school district. And I know that a couple of school board members have gone out and talked to the local police and I know you've also talked to your security. So, but just, just a reminder, I mean, in March, February, we had Nashville and Memphis. We had Tate County, Mississippi in February, East Lansing, Michigan, there were shootings, Washington DC in beginning of February, Los Angeles, Half Moon Bay in January, as well as Monterey Park and Goshen, California, and Enoch, Utah. My point is, when is it going to happen here and how are we going to handle it? So, my point tonight, I know that you're into writing resolutions and sending legislation and letters to our public officials in Sacramento. If this body insists on continuing to write resolutions or letters, how about some support for more gun, stringent gun safety laws with committed funds? Ask them for funds to help provide more security for our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.[961.12][961.12](APPLAUSE).
Oscar Avila, followed by Adrian F., followed by Virginia Renteria.
All right. Good evening, board, President Shaw, core members, staff. As a concerned parent, I'm going to kind of piggyback up what Jim said and I agree with them. According to the CDC, that is the number one cause of death is gun violence. Number two and three is suicide, you know, and mental health. And for the last couple of years, we started having suicide prevention programs at Chino High School and I went to both of them and we have this professor that came, her name is Dan Vargas. She talked about recognizing signs with children around when it came to suicide, right, and tell tales. And she encouraged, they encouraged that the parents get involved, the parents communicate with the children, you know. I'm here to express that, I think as a district, as a board, that we have to encourage parents to be open to their kids and talk. And I think this, this pattern right now that we're kind of seeing where the parents are being kind of kept out of the loop, the parents are not being told, there's being secrets that are held against the parents with the children, I think that's a big, that's going against, that's going against what we've been talking about, about having parents more active, more involved with the community, with the children and stuff. And I think as a board, we should encourage communication between the parents and the children. And I believe that staff is important, teachers are important as educators, but I think the number one, I mean educators have their kids for maybe eight hours a day at the most, right? Maybe play sports. My daughter plays sports, she's there quite a bit. But I'm with her every day and the weekend, we talk and we communicate. She'll share stuff with me that I would never know if I didn't have the communications. I think we should encourage parents to be more involved with their kids, more involved with the communication. And I think if there's any kind of issue where there's any kind of issue, the schools should not encourage secrets. We should not encourage parents to be kept out of the loop. So, I think, I think there's some, some parents that are confused, you know, and I think that it's okay for the children to have their own life and the parents have their own life. And I think as a family, as a community, we should encourage more communication. Why? Because we're being told through these classes that it's so important for us to be involved in education, involved in their lives. So, I would just kind of remind the school board and the community that it is very important that the parents are part of the child education, that the parents are part of everything that happens every day. So, this is what we're being told. We've had these classes already twice in Chino High School. We've attended them and we talked about the signs and being open and, you know, and just being aware of it. Let's encourage that, you know, and let's lower the suicide rate for the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avila.[1141.25][1141.25](APPLAUSE).
The next speaker is Adrian F., followed by Virginia Renteria, followed by Charlene King.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to read from a prepared statement here. Some of you board members pride yourselves in being the voice of the parents and I hope you're also the voice of all students and treat everyone equally without regard to their socioeconomic status, race, party affiliation, religion, or gender identification. I'd like to begin with a quote from Martin Luther King. "Our life begins to end the day we become silent about things that matter." In early March, a half block away from Chino Hills High School, there was a fight that involved several students from the school. School leaders and city police were quick to suspend, expel, press charges, and even arrest some Chino Hills High School students. Many community members applauded these swift actions and school administrations, administrators patted themselves on the back, yet this was only a reactionary measure to underlying issues that had been brewing for months. A few days after the incident, a group of concerned parents met with the Chino Hills High School administration. They wanted to find out why their children, who were waiting for their ride in front of the school, were directed to leave the safety of campus and soon after were exposed to hostile threats. Instead of having constructive dialogue, the principal deflected any fault and placed the entire blame on the students. These parents were told that their boys had a history of being troublemakers and they were even called gang members. These accusations were a slap in the face to all parents present, especially because no parent had ever been contacted in regards to those serious allegations. In fact, there were no prior interventions whatsoever, no counseling, no emails, nothing. Unbeknownst to these parents, school administrators for many months had labeled and profiled these students, which included constant surveillance, interrogation by staff and security, segregation during lunch, and even video recordings of them. This unjust labeling and bigotry has had a profound effect on how these children see themselves, how others have seen them, and how they were expected to act. Students labeled as underachievers or troublemakers will eventually live up to their label. Unfortunately, this unjust profiling by administration has become a self-fulfilling prophecy for a lot of students, resulting in plummeting grades for many and some have even lashed out when confronted. And now, Chino Hills High Administration wants to wash their hands of it. Therefore, we parents are demanding that the district expunge the punishment inflicted on many of these boys and that Chino Hills High School generate meaningful interventions. It should be emphasized that Chino Hills High School has great teachers and other staff who are competent, engaging, inviting, culturally sensitive, and genuinely, genuinely care about the success of all students. We need future leaders that embody these same traits and are a representation of the community they serve. Currently, Chino Hills High School demographics indicate that around 43% of students are Latino and around 28% are Asian or Filipino, yet there seems to be no top administrator at Chino Hills High School who represents this community, who together comprise over 70% of the school population. The time is now for change. Your action or inaction will have ripple effects in the lives of many. Not everything that is...
Sorry, sir, but you're...
Thank you very much.[1345.62][1345.62](APPLAUSE).
Virginia Renteria, followed by Charlene King.
Good evening, board. I just want to thank you for having a pretty awesome school board that will stand up for our children. And yes, we are to protect all of our children. Our last board meeting, I was kind of surprised at what was required of parents if they wanted to have their kids in BAM, the $1,000 requirement. I hope that we can, you guys are working on that for the parents, so allow kids to play because not too many parents can afford $1,000. I'm pleasantly surprised at the amount of people, parents that are here that are a clear indicator that this is a good community and we are standing up for our kids. In my case, I'm standing up for my grandkids. So, I just want to praise you guys for all that you've done and being as PC as possible. And I just want to let everyone know here that we are all here for kids. It doesn't matter what color you are. You're a child. These kids are children. And I'll piggyback off of what Oscar said. It's true, parents do need to be more involved with their kids because it's not just gun violence, there's a lot of suicidal rates for these kids. The fights in the schools, why? Kids have a lot of anger. I don't know why, what's missing in their lives and I feel really bad for them, I really do. So, I just hope that any parents that are watching online or are here can take that time and sit down with your kid and talk with them. You guys do your job and I fully expect that you guys are going to be awesome. We are going to be one of the best school districts in the state of California because California is really going down the tubes. So, I do want our district to be outstanding and I just pray that God give us all wisdom because it's obvious that God is missing in America. So, I thank you and I'm not going to take my whole three minutes because I want to be PC. Thank you.
Thank you.[1486.87][1486.87](APPLAUSE).
Charlene King, followed by Stephen Paez.
President Shaw, board and staff and family members here, I just came to say thank you for the support that you gave to the stepping up program that the Seroptimus International Chino put on. We had over 200 parents there, 200 moms. We had the staff for the junior high, the, all the principals, the board was there. I just want to thank you for the involvement and all your help and support. Thank you very much. It was a great event, thanks to all of you and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Thank you for all that you do for our kids as well.[1526.25][1526.25](APPLAUSE).
Stephen Paez.
Good evening, President Shaw, board members. My name is Stephen Paez. I'm a missionary and I wanted to speak, especially what they were talking about, the kids dying. It's not by gun violence. The number one way kids die is through abortion. There are more kids dying from abortion. 421 babies die every single day in this state. Let me let that sink in. 421 babies die in this state every single day. We kill over 2,300 babies every single day. And I speak at board, I speak at board meetings in LA County because we have Planned Parenthood's inside our high schools under the guise of a wellness center and it's disgusting and I pray it never happens in this place. And so, we're here to support you. There's an army of people that are praying for you. There's an army of people that are here that are for you, that are here to support all your decisions, that are to go for you, but also to watch and also to make sure that things don't go awry like how they were just before when we had Gagne keeping our kids sitting out of schools because they wouldn't wear masks. It's just ridiculous, but we're for you. We want to let you know that you're being prayed for and we want to let you know that whatever we can do to get, to get a proposal to keep Planned Parenthood out of our high school. I get to see women leaving these places with blood dripping down their legs. I have, here, I can show you the pictures.
This is time to speak.
I can show you the pictures. I can show you the ambulances and it's demonic. It's absolutely demonic. And the fact that you see women like this, then they don't even call the ambulance for it. They made her drive in Pomona two Fridays ago. Blood dripping down her legs and this is the face of Planned Parenthood that you don't see in the commercials. So, we're here to tell you that please, don't let Planned Parenthood come into our school. Gun violence is not the number one way. The president is protected with guns. Protect the school with guns. If you show up to a school where you know there's armed police officers outside, every time there's going to be a kid there, guess how many intruders are going to want to come in? Nobody's going to want to come into that. No, they're going to be met with deadly force. Let's make a proposition for that. Hey, in Chino Valley Unified School District, you show up to terrorize a school, you want a proposal for something that's going to happen? You're going to be met with deadly force. We're going to protect our children in this, in this place. When you remove guns from that place, guess where the first person who's identifying as a trans wants to go? They want to go kill Christian kids. Six, six. They killed six. They killed six people at a Christian school. Guys, this is what's happening. Please protect our kids. Please, we're for you. You have the support. Don't worry about the strangers, they are never here. It's quite all right. We are for you guys. You have the support.[1721.04][1721.04](APPLAUSE).
I want to say something before we call the next speaker. We all need to respect each other's time and if you continue, you will be removed. Thank you. I will have security remove you right away for interrupting a public meeting.
Go ahead, Pat. I was the last speaker on non-agenda items.
Okay, awesome. So, we're now on to action items. The first item is resolution 2222, 2022, 2023 slash 43 in support of Assembly Bill 1314, parental notification. Board Member Sonia Shaw recommends the Board of Education adopt a resolution 2022, 2023 dash 43 in support of Assembly Bill 1314, parent notification. Pat, are there any speakers?
No, but just for the record, there were no changes or deletions.
Okay, sorry about that.
There are speakers on item 2A1. There are 52 requests to speak.
Thank you, Pat. Additionally, the board does its best to support the public's right to address the selective officials. It's also important that the board conduct its business in an orderly and fair fashion as provided in Board Bylaw 9320... As provided in Board Bylaw 9323, in the event that an unusual amount of speaker cards is submitted for any item, the Board will hear up to 30 minutes of comments. In the case of non-agenda items, the Board can, if it chooses here, the remainder of the comments after the business has been conducted. Furthermore, the bylaw states that, in part, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the Board. A speaker may not use the podium for purposes other than addressing the Board directly. If there are no further comments, the speaker will be considered to have relinquished his or her allotted time, allotted three minutes. This means that the speaker cannot donate their time to another speaker, which in effect can give a speaker more than three minutes. The exception is when a non-English speaker requires a translator.
The first speaker is Danielle Mora, followed by Christine Vacuna, followed by Maxie Barra.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Enfield. My name is Danielle Mora, and I am the Chino High School Valedictorian for the Class of 2023. I am here to express opposition to this resolution proposed by your school board. The resolution only supports a bill that targets transgender students and puts their safety and livelihood in jeopardy, but this resolution is absolutely unnecessary. None of you, the school board, have transgender children, and neither do most parents supporting this resolution. Why do the lives of transgender children bother you so much? Your gross obsession for LGBTQ youth is clear, and it is disgusting. We should be focusing on bigger and more relevant issues that affect all students. The lives of transgender children do not impact anyone else's life. Furthermore, forcing teachers to out transgender kids to their parents puts them at a risk, a risk of being disowned, kicked out, and even harmed. Many transgender kids are not accepted in their own homes, and many turn to schools as a safe haven. If the parents of a student do not know that their own child is transgender, then it is their own personal problem. This is not a school issue nor a transgender issue. It is a parenting issue. Parents need to simply parent better and create a safe space for their children to allow them to open up. Taking away the safe haven from many transgender kids jeopardizes the safety of students who will not be accepted in their own home. As being part of the LGBTQ community, I know firsthand the fear that many kids have not been accepted by their own parents. Fortunately for me, I have accepting and supportive parents. However, several LGBTQ kids do not have this luxury, let alone transgender children. Many transgender kids are threatened and harmed by their own parents because they are not willing to understand their own child. It is parents like you that they are afraid of. You, the school board, will never understand the gravity of the danger this resolution places upon transgender students. You were supposed to protect students. You were supposed to support students. You were supposed to ensure equality for each student. However, proposing this resolution does the complete opposite. It will harm many students, and it will affect the lives of many in this district. Targeting a specific marginalized group just for your own political and religious gain is immoral and horrid. It is clear that our ignorant school board is willing to put politics and their far-right Christian beliefs before any student in this district. Every student deserves to feel safe at school, and every student deserves to feel accepted. No one has a right to tell any student that they do not belong. Transgender kids belong in this district, and they deserve the same treatment as everyone else. You will not turn your back against transgender students without a fight. Do your job and protect every student in this district by opposing this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Christine Vacuna, followed by Maxie Barra. Christine Vacuna, followed by Maxie Barra, followed by July.
Hello. Thank you, guys, for your time. So I am against this bill, because it is not right to treat our kids like this. It is not right to out them to their parents without their permission. This is an invasion of privacy, and it should not happen. I do not believe this bill. This, it is not right. You guys see what is happening across the country. You know it's a country-wide thing, because all of these politicians across the country are doing the same exact thing you guys are trying to do. They're trying to ban transgender kids from sports, trying to ban them from school activities, trying to ban them from even being learned about in schools, that they even exist. I don't believe that this should be allowed. They're people, too. And exposing them to their parents, school can be a safe space for these people. They can feel open at school, be with their friends, be themselves. But if you're exposing them to their parents, who may not support them and could possibly put them in a dangerous and abusive situation, it is not right. These people have a home at our schools. I will always love them, and everyone I know will always love them. And it is not right for you guys to be putting them in this tight spot. I do not believe that this bill should be passed. It is not correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maxie Barra. Maxie Barra, followed by July.
Good evening, everyone. I am a CVUSD student here to speak against Assembly Bill 1314 and any support of it by the Board. It's dangerous and a waste of our district's time. This bill would require schools to out their trans students to their families. Supporting your trans child is suicide prevention. This is because trans children face increased risk of abuse, self-harm, and suicide in homes of unsupportive parents. This means this bill will cause irreversible damage. Trans youth with parents who are transphobic will be subjected to abuse. They can be physically assaulted. They can be emotionally abused. They can be sexually assaulted. They can be kicked out. They can be on the streets. They can end up homeless. They can be murdered. They can have their lives ripped from their hands because of transphobic people, because of unsupportive parents. Supporting this bill is saying all of that is okay in the name of parental notice? In the name of this idea that we need to share children's identity with their parents, even if they live in unsafe homes? And forcing teachers and schools to do that to kids who live in unsafe homes? This bill is saying, "I'm okay with having that blood on my hands." The harsh reality is, yes, some people are okay with that. Some may try to soothe themselves by saying that they don't support abuse. They would never support violence. They just support parents' rights. These people are missing the key point, that purposefully outing a trans child is abuse. We could be using this time to discuss relevant issues in our district. This is a waste of time. We need to address student mental health. We need to address sexual assault on campus. But we know that this doesn't have any teeth. Recommending this and supporting this bill, there's no teeth behind this. So this is just for a public spectacle for CVUSD and Ms. Shaw to say that, you know, this board wants to be transphobic. We support parents' rights more than we support saving the lives of trans children, the people who are most vulnerable on our school district campuses. And if my words still haven't changed your mind on supporting this bill, thank you for allowing me this time to publicly review the consequences of your actions with you and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you.
July, followed by Gloria Sicarelli, followed by Frank Rodriguez.
Hi. You know, I practiced what I would say over and over today, and now that I'm here, it's all gone. All I can feel is just unbridled sadness and rage. What will it take for you to understand what pain, what sorrow, what immense trauma we go through daily? And now, you're going to add to that? All the name of what? For what end is your, what goal do you have with this? There has been so much awful things that have happened this year. And instead of doing anything to help alleviate the pain, your students have already felt, you're just going to throw them to the wolves? School shootings are on the rise. They are going to continue to rise. Instead of doing anything for that, we are here targeting people who are so already vulnerable. My friends, I love them so much. I would do anything for them. I see what they go through on a day-to-day basis. They are the strongest people I know. I don't know if this bill will get passed or not, but what I do know is that we shall overcome. You will not exterminate us, no matter what. There is no way you will ever be able to pray all of us dead. Once upon a time, way back in the 70s, a couple dolls decided they had had enough, and they decided they were going to do something revolutionary about it. I am not afraid to do what they did if it means protecting the people I love. The only thing that stops me from creating another Stonewall is my own mercy and human decency, which every day, people like the people behind this bill are trying to convince me they're not worthy of. But I am not like them. I am not a creature of hate. I value love. I value empathy. I value helping others and seeing that they will be safe one day, that they will not have to live in fear, that they will see that their lives matter, all of their lives matter. They are not pieces of trash. They are not demons to be exercised. They should be able to do what they want, when they want. They should be able to just love who they love. There should be no predator against them.
Thank you.
Gloria Sicarelli, followed by Frank Rodriguez, followed by Bridgette.
I won't take up much of your time, as I want to make sure those that represent the community most affected by this resolution have an opportunity to speak their piece. To that end, I have a short statement and a short question. First, I have to make it clear that as it relates to, that this school board is failing just about every group in the district that is not white, heterosexual, heterosexual, and Christian. If you disagree, then you have willfully blinded yourself to the eradication of Black History Month in education, the dimming of desire to teach the history of racial minorities, and now this resolution to adopt AB 1314. My question is, where does it end? Erasing the histories of the racial minorities in this district wasn't enough? Enacting resolutions that make certain areas of this district feel like Jim Crow South isn't enough? Now you want to enact a bill with implications so dangerous it will take us back to the days of Matthew Shepard, Marsha P. Johnson, and Harvey Milk? All members of the queer community who died at the hands of bigots who used laws like this one to justify their disgusting crimes? So I ask again, where does it end? If nothing else, and if for no other reason, I need you to understand this. Adopting this resolution will cost lives. Outing queer kids before they are ready will cost lives. Adopting a resolution that will inevitably encourage peers to bully queer students will cost lives. Don't turn the school district of the city that I love into a place that isn't safe for any marginalized group. And as an aside, to those that think a queer kid confiding in a trusted teacher or administrator is grooming, I have this to say. Every Disney princess ever does what? Gets married, shares a kiss with her new prince, and has babies. So in reality, which community is grooming whom? Thank you.
Frank Rodriguez, followed by Bridgette, followed by Bill Sayley.
Good evening. Any parent or adult that doesn't support AB 1314 is a groomer and should be barred from teaching children ever in this district. Telling a child not to talk to your parents is demonizing the people that are supposed to love them the most, the people that do love them the most. The number-one way my community got the rights that they have today is not by doing what these radicals are saying in this building. It's by speaking to your parents, telling them who you are, standing up because a majority of them already know. The number-one comment gay people get from their parents after they come out? "We already knew. We were just waiting for you." A majority of the people in here actually brought their parents. These transgender kids have supportive parents. Why wouldn't we want to tell them that? If we want them to quit suicide, the number-one way to do that is to involve the parents. Why do they want to rip that away? I take myself back to when I was their age, a kid that wanted to put on my mom's makeup, that put my mom's makeup on her very horribly. They would have made me trans. They would have told me that I was a girl born in the wrong body, simply because I put makeup on, played with dollhouses, and enjoyed to wear a skirt every now and again. But Lord, and behold, growing up, I'm just a gay man that loves my parents, that thanks them for being here for me. That's the journey that these kids need to go down. Staying silent, staying in the closet, will not further achieve what my community has set out forth. 70% of the United States of America supports the LGBT community. Do you think that 30% is going to reduce by shutting our mouths? By keeping us in the closet? By telling our parents, "You know what? You're a danger to me, so I'm going to shut my mouth so you don't attack me"? Where's the data to prove that? There is none. This is fear-mongering and closet trauma at its best. You have a generation of people in here, adults, acting like children, dictating to the people at this board how to protect these youth? Not on my watch. These kids need their parents, and the best way to do that is to keep them incorporated with the decisions that they make of the delegated duty that they give to you. You are not their parents. No one in this classroom or any classroom can deem any right over any child. That is a parent's duty. Thank you for further projecting the acceptance rate of my community, reducing the suicidality rate, and reducing drug addiction by just simply keeping their parents involved. Thank you. Gays Against Groomers.
Thank you.
Bridgette? Bridgette?
Good evening, board members, President Shaw. Can you hear me?
Maybe move the mic closer to you. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, board members. I am here tonight to voice my concerns regarding AB 1314. I feel it is important to state what should be obvious, and that is, as parents, it is essential that we know what is happening in our child's life. Seeing as we are legally responsible for our children until the age of 18, it goes without saying that we should not be excluded from any life-altering decisions that affect our children. If a child were to get in trouble at school or with the law, the parent would be the first to be contacted. This is because the parent is legally, emotionally, and financially responsible for their children until the age of 18. So if our children are struggling with gender identity, we as parents absolutely need to know. It is crucial we be made aware of the situation. Anything less is a disservice to the minor child and a violation of parental rights. I will leave you with this that I found on www.supremecourt.gov, parental rights in the Supreme Court of the United States. More recently, this court declared in Washington versus Glaxberg 52, sorry, 521 U.S. 702 in 1997 that the Constitution, and specifically the due process clause of the 14th Amendment protects the fundamental right of parents to direct the care, upbringing, and education of their children. Thank you, Board, for listening.
Thank you.
Bill Sayley, followed by Jim Gallagher, followed by Katie Martinez.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for bringing this resolution up and for supporting AB 1314. I am the author of the bill. I want to explain why I introduced the bill and what the bill actually does, because by the sound of it, it sounds like a lot of people haven't actually read the bill. So the reason I introduced the bill is because I saw a trend up and down the state of California in which schools were implementing policies that excluded parents in the affairs of their kids. Specifically, schools implemented policies saying that children had a right to privacy from their own parents. This is nonsense. There is no such legal doctrines. Kids do not have privacy from parents. Kids don't have capacity to make decisions as minors, and their parents are critical components to their best interests. So when we found out that there were school districts actively transitioning kids without their parents' knowledge or consent, this is an issue. And it's an issue which I felt was appropriate to take action on. And that's why I introduced AB 1314, which is really simple. It doesn't out anybody. What it says is that the school is going to actively participate in the social transitioning of the minor. The parent has to be notified. It doesn't change anything. It doesn't change how they identify, doesn't change any other decision- It doesn't change how they identify, doesn't change any other decisions that the child makes at school. All it says is that you have to bring the parents into the loop, and they have to know what's happening. This has been public policy in California since the beginning. Parents have been seen as partners in education, not spectators. And really, what the core of this issue is, is who has the best interest of kids in mind? Is it their parents or the government? And I submit to you that nobody has the better interest for their kids, their well-being, their safety, than their own parents. And kids are the domain of their family, their parents, not the government. What this fight is about, and what you're seeing such vitriol, is people want to own our kids. Nobody owns our kids. Kids belong to their parents, and that should be reaffirmed. That is the law. And even if this bill does not pass, I encourage this district and every district up and down this state to enact this policy, which you can do. Thank you for your time, and thank you for supporting the bill.
Thank you.
Leila Micali, excuse me, Leila Maliki, followed by Jim Gallagher, followed by Katie Martinez.
So just on my first word. So I actually did read the proposed bill, and I actually did read your interview with the Sacramento Bee, and I do have a few things to mention. But when I think of CVSD, I think of a true community. But this brings into retrospect this school board. When I presented on the superintendent's advisory panel for this county, I said three things about myself. I represent equity, accessibility, and education for students. Let me repeat, for students. As I've begun to meet more students extremely involved in advocacy and education across San Bernardino, I've started to realize that the problems we see here in CVSD are only in CVSD. And I've begun to think about this a lot. So the CVSD school board has been going about these past few months, and I've seen a type of toxicity that is present in these meetings, and I believe that it needs to be changed. So since it seems you can get enough parent comments, parent feedback, and more, it seems you've lost the voice of the people you are truly serving, the students of this district. So since the majority of these people are parents, people who don't undergo the everyday structure of school, I'll offer one of the very few student voices. And let me tell you, I found great perspectives from students from my school, not just my own. I wanted to preface this as a way to say, this is not something parents have been bringing up completely, as there are so many issues that need to be addressed in this district. So one of my friends texted me, "You've got a whole lot of people at your protection surrounding you, but please do not go and speak if you don't feel safe." And that just about shows how toxic these board rooms are for students. So I'm going to start. This bill is harming a community that is already being harmed daily. According to new surveys, and anti-LGBTQ bills are being proposed, about seven hundred fifty plus, according to US Today, in 2023. Asking a few students who've experienced what going by school and different pronouns in schools about their opinion on this, they said, "I think this is to protect, this is not to protect safely students, and I don't have a safe environment where they can express themselves. And school is a safe environment because home can be transphobic." And this is true. After verifying with more than five students who also agree with this statement, they all thoroughly believed that this, that a school environment was a lot safer than at home. So I'm bringing forth this argument to front with student opinions. In the description of this bill proposed by Bill Assaly, quote, "was actually under concern of these students' mental health," even citing the Society for Research and Child Development, saying that parental support for LGBTQ students leads to fewer symptoms of depression. But within this is not considerate of the fact that not all students actually support their students if they were to be outed or come out. To further this, Greg Assaly also cited the fact that students should be in with the parents, not the government. But this is a government floor. Just as likely, this is being used as a political front to expose and deter those vulnerable students. At Chino High School, we have an amazing diverse community, of that is the GSA being one of the, if not most, of the largest clubs at Chino. Considering that, this is a huge student population you are harming. Most students can't even stand here today because of the fear of being outed, not only feeling authentic and comfortable in their own schools. To continue, for those saying if students face abuse at home, they can go to their teachers to express trust, it's not likely.
Thank you.
And this was mentioned when Greg Assaly actually did his interview with the Sacramento Bee.
Thank you. Jim Gallagher, followed by Katie Martinez, followed by Greg Abdu.
All right. I'm here also in opposition to tonight's resolution. I'm going to recommend a no vote or an abstention. First of all, with all due respect to Assemblyman Assaly, the California Constitution does indicate that minors enjoy a right to privacy under Article One, Section One of the Constitution. It's enforceable against private parties and government officials. The right to privacy encompasses the right to nondisclosure, which they call autonomy privacy, as well as in the collection and dissemination of personal information, such as medical records and gender identity, which is informational privacy. Now, even when the information is part of a student's records, it's also covered by the Family, Educational, and Privacy Rights Act, which is federal. The law provides several exceptions that do permit appropriate communications under those circumstances where a student, in fact, is subject to stress and possibly at risk of health and safety to themselves. At that point, then the proper parties can be brought in to ensure, in fact, that their health and safety is protected. Otherwise, if the students request privacy, especially when it comes to their medical condition, the, we need to honor that. A trans, the point is, a transgender or gender non-conforming student may not express their gender identity openly in all contexts. They may, in fact, not want to reveal this to their parents as they struggle with this identity issue. Instead, they may want to go to a trusted counselor or teacher to talk about it, and revealing this gender identity may compromise their safety. In some cases, not in all. And I kind of, I feel, parents should be involved, yes. I think a good counselor should be bringing in the parents at the appropriate time when the student is, is open to it. The point is, the students' rights should come first, and disclosing that a student is transgender without the student's permission may, in fact, violate California's anti-discrimination law by increasing their vulnerability to harassment, and it may violate the students' rights to privacy. Now, a recent Trevor Project report you might have heard of said that eighty percent now of trans children are subject to suicide, possible suicides. So the point is, we want our LGBTQ community to feel safe talking to their parents about their gender and sexuality. But this assembly bill ignores that reality, and we know it's not going to pass. I think your message to your local students would be very bad if, in fact, you, you make this vote in favor of it tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brandon Zunigstein, excuse me, Brandon Zuniggin, followed by Katie Martinez, followed by Greg Abdu.
While we wait for the next speaker, we're almost at thirty minutes. Do I have any consensus to hear the rest of the speakers from the board?
Brandon Zunig-
Sorry, it's okay.
Yes, yes.
You want to do for another thirty minutes? Is everybody okay with another thirty minutes? And then we'll-
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. I just want to know if I need to-
Brandon Zuniga?
Okay. So at seven thirty, I'll just ask one more time, and if we don't have, then we, okay. No, no, to me if I don't see the seven thirty.
Hello? Okay. Dear members of the district, I come to you today with a heavy heart, as I plead with you to reconsider your support to out transgender students to their parents. As a society, we have a duty to protect and support our most vulnerable members, and in this case, it is our transgender youth who are at risk. Can you imagine what it must be like for a transgender student to be forced to reveal their identity to their parents before they are ready? The fear, the anxiety, the uncertainty of how their parents will react, it is simply too much for any young person to bear. Think about the emotional toll that outing a student can take, the potential rejection and discrimination they may face from their own family, and lead to feelings of worthlessness, despair, and hopelessness. It can lead to a lifetime of trauma and pain, and in some cases, even drive them to take their own lives. By allowing teachers to out transgender kids to their parents, we are violating this fundamental principle of human dignity. We are creating an environment of fear, an environment of oppression and discrimination that strips away the agency and autonomy of our youth. We are sending a message that they are not valued, that they are not accepted, and that they are not safe. Transgender youth already face overwhelming challenges and discrimination in their lives, and outing them to their parents only adds to the burden. We must not allow our schools to become a place of danger and fear for our students. Instead, we must create a safe and supportive environment that embraces diversity and protects the well-being of every student. I implore to you about the emotional impact that outing transgender students will have on their lives. Let us do what is right and just, and show our transgender students that we see them, we support them, and we love them for who they truly are. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Katie Martinez, followed by Greg Abdu, followed by Eric Dolan.
It's kind of ironic that the crowd behind us that's holding up these signs right, probably right now, that says "Stop the Hate," are the ones booing with anyone that opposes their opinion. It's also ironic, as they talk about these trans kids being the most vulnerable, and that suicide rates are going to shoot up, and all of these things are going to happen. There already are. Suicide is through the roof. Bullying is through the roof. And you know what? It's not ironic that it's higher in places where parents are less involved. That's not, that's not a coincidence. You know what's ironic, though, is when Esther Kim sat in that seat up there, the one that probably rallied half the people here, I talked to her last year at a phone call. I said, "You know, Esther, you know, you rally all these people up on this. Where are your, where's your voice for the special needs? The true vulnerable that make up a far more majority than these kids? The ones that truly get bullied? Where were the ones at Don Lugo where there's transgender kids there?" And they stood silent as an autistic kid was bullied so bad he needed surgery and jumped. Everyone stood silent as they recorded. This is a heart issue, and parents need to get involved. Our school system, our government sucks. It sucks. And it's not a reflection on this board, it's a reflection on California. They need less control. Parents need more control. And I'm sorry that this transgender community is being pawns in this agenda, is nothing to do with them. It has to do with getting control of our kids, to influence us negatively, to infiltrate our families. And the fact that they can't sit here quietly and respectfully to listen to opposing views speaks volumes on their character. We have major mental health issues in our community. We have so many flaws we need to work on, and that starts at home. That means parents need to be involved. Now, if the parent is at risk of beating a child or murdering their kid because they're gay, they shouldn't have that kid. And you know what? Frankly, that is when a school counselor does get involved. That is what they should be there for. There shouldn't be secrets among parents. I should be able to go into a school and have access to my kid's records. We are a team. If I'm on the hook for having to go for anything legal, then I should be on the hook for everything, and I should know the good and the bad. That's what parenting is. They're talking about how students are up here and how ironically, none of us parents have trans kids. Well, ironically, none of these students are parents, so they can't speak for us. And I can tell you right now, when I birth my kids, I will do anything for them, and I will accept them and love them, no matter if I disagree. And most other parents would probably agree. It's about love and empathy and communication, not secrets and hiding and having government in our families' homes. So this, this has to stop. And the agenda between the LGBT, this has nothing to do with them. It has to do with corruption and the crime rates and the violence and the suicide czar. Thank you.
Greg, Greg Abdu, followed by Eric Dolan, followed by Oscar Avila.
Thank you for letting me speak today. Thank you that I made the thirty-minute mark. You know, I've spoken at a lot of board meetings, and I've never had an issue, but today, it's, it's twisted up my heart pretty good. Because I think one thing that we need to stand on very solidly is the truth. And I think a lot of these kids that are here, it breaks my heart that they're arguing to take parents out. You guys are right, the school is supposed to be a safe place, but it was never supposed to be a secret place.
That's right.
I've raised kids. My kids are now twenty and eighteen. They're not adults yet, but they're very close. But there's several things that my kids have done through the years that I didn't agree with. But that doesn't mean that you just go do it on your own and don't ask your parents. Guys, you need to understand something. At the end of the day, these teachers and these people that are telling you, "You need to be alone, and you need to be in secret, and you need to go do this on your own," they're not going to be there forever. Your parents are there forever. There's nothing my kids can do that would make me walk away from them. Nothing. And this bill doesn't say that you can't be trans. It doesn't say that you can't be gay. It doesn't say that you can't have a problem with all that. But you know, you guys are instilling fear in these kids that are the highest suicide rate that we've ever seen in our country, and now you're arguing that you don't want them seen. And the sad thing is, this man right here has put forth a bill, and he can't even get a date to get heard in committee, because our government doesn't want to argue for you guys either. That's the saddest thing in this whole deal. That's the saddest thing in this whole deal. You have a government that has been sitting there for the past years alienating the family and tearing them apart, and now they've convinced you guys, you kids, that they're actually attacking, to fight on their side. Bill, thank you very much for bringing this bill forward. I don't know what's going to happen after today. I don't know what's going to happen in the assembly. But you know what? If we had a hundred guys like you, we'd take back this country, and we would save every single one of our kids. We'd save every single one of our kids that are being affected.
We're all Americans.
And I commend you. Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Eric Dolan, followed by Oscar Avila, followed by Misty Startup.
Good evening, board. I was standing outside in the overflow, impressed by the number of people that showed up. I could hear the emotion on both sides, reactions to speakers, conversations. Those conversations were largely childish and immature, actually. Hearing their content convinced me that many of those people having conversations still needed their parents involved. The irony of a school district, when a child acts up, has a discipline problem, they call their parents. There are things called parent-teacher conferences. Parent guardians are listed on their emergency cards. I heard lots of emotion. I even heard veiled threats against safety. As recently as yesterday, the press secretary for the White House said, "The President of the United States believes that the decision for gender-affirming health care is a decision between the parents and their child." In a world where gender alterations pioneered by countries such as Sweden, France, Denmark, and England now has the same countries taking a large step backward, issuing statements of caution, given the injuries from hormone dosing, they've discovered the risk of hormonal intervention far outweighs any potential benefits. Their new cautions, their new advisels of caution are evidence-based, and cited in saying that poor quality evidence was to blame. In the 1930s, Adolf Hitler conducted a baby isolation experiment where the babies were removed from their parents and raised in a sterile environment. They died. 1944 and 1950, the United States did the same thing. The babies died. Isolation and purposeful division is detrimental to life. The National Library of Medicine says eighty-two percent of transgendered people have considered suicide. These are the people not waiting to transgender. These are people who have already transgendered. Forty percent have attempted suicide. One of the protective factors cited was family support. Provide a fighting chance by supporting this resolution that keeps parents involved in medical decisions with their kids. I think I have shown that encouraging this desire to change and/or excluding parents actually takes lives. The district has no place in isolation of children. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oscar Avila, followed by Misty Startup, followed by Stephen Paez.
Hello, Board. I can't believe we're here. I mean, just, you know, a year ago, we're fighting for the kids to come back to school, we're advocating for our children to be safe and not to be forced to take anything they don't want to take. And now we know that whole pandemic thing, you know, it went away, you know? It went away, and our kids were fine, you know? Most of our kids were fine, thank the Lord. But I just can't believe the world at place right now. We got adults, grown adults, instigating, fear-mongering, scaring our kids, you know, scaring these transgender kids, telling them that people hate you and they're against you and all that. And this bill, like the author said, you know, they haven't read the bill, they don't understand it. It doesn't say that you can't be who you want to be, it just says that we want your parents to be part of it, you know, that we believe in supporting you in whatever way, you know? Nobody hates anybody here. If anybody hates anybody here, you tell me, okay? I'll talk to them, you tell me. Anybody bullies you, tell me. I guarantee you, nobody here hates you, they all love you, but what it is, we want your parents to be part of this, you know, we want your parents to be part of this community, you know? But we got adults. We got somebody back there that rallies everywhere together, some evil person, you know, that is bringing hate to his community, saying that we don't like you, the board hates you. They should be ashamed of themselves, you're an adult, you're people that are scaring these kids, telling them that they don't like you. Nobody hates you, they love these kids. We're here because we love them, we're fighting to open the schools up last year, we're fighting to get kids back in the classroom, we're fighting where kids are being out in the rain, you know, being abandoned and abused, you know? This is why this board flipped. This community wanted to fight for you, right? And we're doing it now, and we got adults, you know, adults that are scaring these kids, telling them that we hate you? What? Are you kidding me? We want your parents to love you. So, and somebody said that there's nothing going on right now. There's current lawsuits right now in California where schools are being sued because staff in schools, not here, but other schools, that they help kids transition behind their parents' back, you know? If a kid wants to transition, talk to your parents, you know? And if you can't get that, we'll get you help, right? But go to your parents first. Your parents know what you're going through, your parents will be the person in defense, your parents are the ones that birthed you, your parents are the ones that love you, you know? My family, you know, we have people that are gay, you know, I have a nephew, he's a doctor, I love him. He might work on you one day, he might help me one day. But what I'm saying is, encourage family to help each other, don't bring division, don't be that spiteful old person that scares these kids. Love these kids, should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you.
Misty, followed by Stephen Paez, followed by Crystal.
Good evening. I just came from work, and I work at a surgery center. I had two teenagers today. The patients, because they were teenagers, had to have their parents there, stay there the whole time, they had to sign the consent forms, they had to stay for the discharge instructions, they had to agree that they understood what was going on, they talked to the doctor, the parents had to be there. I had to give permission for my daughter to watch a PG-13 movie. I have to give permission, or have to go pick up my child when they're at school and they have a headache, they can't use a cough drop, they can't use a Tylenol without parent My daughter just had senior ditch day the other day, didn't show up for school. Guess who called me wanting to know why she wasn't at school? My son, he missed school yesterday because he went to the beach with his cousins who are on spring break from out of town, 15 years old, but school wants to know why he's not there. It's just interesting to me that there's, oh, let's see, my daughter sprained her ankle so bad that she had to use a scooter to get around. I had to have a doctor's note for her to use that scooter. Are you kidding me? But yet, when my child may be confused or may not know, he's unsure, she's unsure what gender they are, all of a sudden, secrets to the parents. Doesn't make sense. Do you know what qualifies me as a parent to make the decisions for my kids? Love I have for my kids. No one in this room loves my kids like I do. That qualifies me to make all decisions for my kids until they are 18 years and older, and they are gone. The state doesn't get to choose when I'm a parent and when I'm not. One day, they can say, "Oh, today, your child's 12, you can make a decision for them." But on this issue, oh, no, sorry, even if they're 15, 16, you can't decide. That's wrong, the state doesn't get to do that. I have God-given rights as the parent, I am the one that birthed my kids, and I will raise them as I am meant to be and have been blessed by God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Paez, followed by Crystal, followed by Alexis Taurus.
So here's the deal, we have a heart issue. We got an issue of the heart. When parents are not being allowed inside their kids' world, when they're being held at bay, when teachers are being fired for standing, for sharing with the parents, I mean, when you have a kid who now suddenly wants to change their whole gender, and they're suicidal, and you don't want to bring the parents in, that's demonic. But if you don't hear anything today, hear this, there's going to be a day that we die. And that day, you're going to stand before God, and you're going to give an account for what you did in this body. And you're either going to stand righteous and be approved, or you're going to stand and be condemned. But here's the way. The way is that heaven is a perfect place, and it is the gift of God, you cannot earn it or deserve it. There is nothing you can do, it is the undeserved favor, the grace of God that He gives you. It's like if I stole from my parents and they bought me a car. That's a small picture of how God gives us heaven when we don't deserve it. But the problem is, you have to be perfect. And if you were to put the letter of the law up, if you were to put the Ten Commandments up, if you've ever told a lie, if you've ever had sex outside of marriage, if you've ever coveted anything, you would stand guilty and you would not pass, you would not be sent to heaven. Because the Bible says, "Be perfect as your Father in heaven is perfect." And there's nobody here in this room that's perfect. And God is just, and He is holy, and He is also love, but He will not let sin go without being punished, He's a righteous judge. And so there's only one way to get there. God got imperfect people, God got sinners to a perfect place, and the only way He did that is by Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, the way, the truth, and the life. He is very narrow, there is no other way. He said, "There is no one to the Father except through Me." And we got Good Friday going up tomorrow, and everyone has the opportunity to bow their knee to Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, the one that was ridiculed, put to open shame, the one that was crucified, His back was ripped open, He put the crown of thorns on His head willingly like a lamb sent to the slaughter, bearing the iniquities of our sin that we sin every single day, He paid that death punishment for you and I. And we will stand in account. It is appointed for man once to live and then comes, once to die, and then comes the judgment. And if you don't know Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, this bill is the least of your worries. Get right with God, come before Him, bow your heart to Him and say, "Sit on the throne of My heart, make Me new, change My life, put your identity in Jesus Christ and Him alone. He is the way, the truth, and the life." Amen.
Thank you.
Crystal? Crystal, followed by Alexis Taurus, followed by Darlene Berg.
Good evening. So I'm a parent in this district of three kids, and I want to extend my support for this AB 1314. As a parent, there isn't anything that my kids can do, anything that my kids could do to make me love or support them any less, and I feel like most parents would agree with that. As parents, we are legally responsible for our children until they are 18. All over my son's school, there are signs saying, "See something, say something," right? We are encouraging our children to stand up and to say something and to be bold, but yet we're encouraging adults to hide things from those kids' parents? This, it makes no sense. I personally, I obviously can only speak for myself, I'm very involved with my kids, school, sports, whatever their passions are, I'm always there to support them. And I feel like a lot of parents are, but unfortunately, a lot of parents maybe don't have the time that I do to be there as present as I am, but that doesn't mean they don't have the right to know what's going on in their kids' lives. We do need to bridge the gap for parents, schools, students, instead of encouraging things to be hidden. If we let this happen, where are we going to draw the line for parents' rights? Are we going to start taking away permission slips for field trips? Are we going to be taking away parent-teacher conferences? Are we going to take away emergency cards? Because who's number one on those emergency cards? Parents, guardians, right? I know that sounds extreme, but I just feel this is the route we're going to go if we continue to take away our rights as parents. We're the parents, we're responsible. I didn't have kids for schools and governments to hide things from me about them. I will raise my kids, I will support my kids, I will love my kids. It breaks my heart that kids are feeling anxiety about their relationship with their parents, but if we don't open that door, you really don't know how your parents are going to handle things, right? So I feel as the world is rapidly changing, we can't be taking parents out of the equation. So thank you for your support of this bill, and I got your back.
Thank you.
Alexis Taurus, followed by Darlene Berg, followed by Diego Fernandez.
Good evening. Scripture says in Matthew 2239, "Love your neighbor as yourself," period. There is no caveat, there are no strings attached, it is not whether you agree or disagree or even understand. School shootings continue to occur at an alarming rate almost on a daily basis. Safety continues to be an issue. Your friends stood here pleading for you to address the special education department that's in desperate need of restructuring. Children are going to school hungry, unprepared, suicide rates are at an all-time high, your band is paying out of their pockets to represent our schools here with pride, and this, the school system's broken. There are so many areas that you need to address, and yet this is what you chose to put your focus? You took an oath to represent and protect all children within the Chino Valley School District. You have a responsibility to all students, regardless of what your personal or religious beliefs may be. And as a mother and a Christian, you know you are called and must be here for everyone. Romans 1419 says, "Let us therefore make every effect to do what leads to peace and to mutual edification." You do not get to pick and choose, nor do you get to interpret or decide who deserves your protections, representation, or support. No child is more important than the other or more deserving. I have to believe that the people that helped put you on that dais, even myself, have the faith that you can and do and will do what is right by all our children. It is not too late. Do your job, fix what is actually broken. Matthew 937 says, "Whoever welcomes one of these little children in My name welcomes Me, and whoever welcomes Me does not welcome Me but the one who sent Me." Now's your chance, your call to action. Stand up, step outside your little box, cast aside your judgment, your fear. You chose to take up this cross. Take your oath to heart, represent all of His children. I have faith that with reflection, you'll do better. Love your neighbor as you love yourself. Chino Valley students, all children, trans, queer, straight, your sons, your daughters, everyone, Christians, Jews, Muslims, everyone, you have an army of support rallying around you. We see you, we love you, we accept you, period.
Darlene Berg?
Good evening. I'm a parent in this district, and Sonia Shaw, shame on you. You have sat on this board and looked out at this crowd and told us you are here for all of the students, and I gave you the benefit of the doubt. And now you're turning your back on an entire population of students, students who need you more than ever. By introducing this resolution, you are telling these students they don't matter. I saw what your pastor said and how he encouraged the congregation to come out tonight and support your resolution. I have to wonder, why is it that so many Christian pastors that I know preach love, acceptance, treat others how you want to be treated, and yet your pastor preaches hate, only accepts people that are like you, and to show all others that don't believe your church that they are not equal? I do want to know, when did the score board become an extension of the Calvary Chapel Church in Chino Hills? When did you decide not to uphold the oath that you took with this position? Do the people you convinced to vote for you know that you are not supporting safe schools and positive school and climate? And are you really supporting the parents, or are you just supporting the parents who have hate for the LGBTQ+ community like you? I am so disappointed, Sonia. You said you are here for everyone, this is a clear message that you are not. I contacted you and asked you if we could meet in January, hoping we could find common ground, and you said yes, that you would get back to me, and you never did. I even contacted your pastor, but that was a total runaround. You sat here a couple meetings ago and said you will attend anyone's event and support all students in the district. How many LGBTQ+ club meetings or events have you attended? How can you present this resolution and think you are supporting all students? You clearly aren't familiar with the LGBTQ+ community, but need to understand that it is not safe for all young people to tell their parents how they identify. I understand, all these people said it's okay, so that's great. It's not that way for everyone. For many students, school is their safe space because most young people have no issue with how their peers identify. If you could ask the young people in your church, they would agree, but after seeing your pastor's hate speech towards transgender community, I am positive no young person you affiliate with will admit to having no issue. A yes vote for this resolution tells these students that they do not belong, that you are going to tell on them if they prefer to be called by a gender different than their biological sex. For some, this could increase their chance of depression and suicide, and this will be on your hands directly. Your message has been clear to these students, they do not belong, and they do not have a safe space at school anymore. Make this right. My message to the students of the Chino Valley School District is this, if you are struggling with your identity or struggling with acceptance, whether you are part of the LGBTQ+ family or not, you belong in these schools, those teachers and students need you. Also know this, my organization is a safe space for you. We will address anyone that bullies, uses their power to intimidate, or makes you feel like less than you are. Be on the lookout for more positive impact from us coming your way. We see you, we support you always. Stand in love.
Thank you.
Diego Fernandez. How many left?
Good evening, everyone. We have school board members who call themselves "The Voice of the Parents." How could you be our voice when instead of focusing on the situation at Chino Hills High, where my brother and his friends fear for their safety every day due to the principal kicking them off of school, you guys are more concerned with putting the LGBT community in danger? It pains me that this board does nothing for our students but harass them. It must be no coincidence that one board member who has pushed for this resolution has zero experience in public education, which is utterly ridiculous. And the other has been quoted saying that Hitler wasn't as bad as the textbooks make it out to be. And he also said that immigrants at the border, all they bring is drugs, human trafficking, and thank God for the Second Amendment. What is wrong with you, man? You're a self-hating Mexican. I no longer want to see this board to be a circus week in and week out, it is absolutely unacceptable. When you attack trans youth, you're not for equality for all students. The Pledge of Allegiance ends with liberty and justice for all. You have just organized this community against you, and this is only the beginning. And I'm so sorry, Mr. Essely, that you have to be associated with these people, these are now your allies, people who say Hitler wasn't as bad as the textbooks make him out to be, really sexist, homophobic, racist, you name it, that's who you're allied with. This is the standard you've taken, absolutely shameful. And for Mr. Fernando Vanasuela with the Dodgers jersey, once again, I'm telling you, these-
Sir, you have to direct the board, sorry.
Okay, I'm so sorry. But, yeah, it's, and what other, and what other job can you just be here with zero qualifications? We need to recall Shaw, we need to recall Cruz. And James Na, you also put a school prayer to the Supreme Court wasting thousands of dollars of taxpayer money. You, you need to be recalled as well. We'll be waiting for you next election. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna see if the board has consensus to continue for another thirty minutes. I'll take a vote. Mr. Na.
We're ready to, uh, finish the meeting.
So, that's a no?
No.
Mr. Cruz?
I'll continue.
I vote, I'll continue.
I'm a no.
Yeah, we have to finish the meeting. People are waiting outside.
It's decided that we will not continue to hear any more speakers.
People are waiting outside.
Don't end it on a "yeah."
Sorry, we have to, the, the board voted. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
May I have a second? Thank you. We're on to comments, questions, or discussions?
I have a comment.
Can you use your light system so I can make sure if anybody has comments? Mr. Na, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Assemblymen. I've been, uh, talking about low-quality politicians, Sacramento, but I, I think we found a reasonable person for the first time, especially visiting us. Thank you for standing up and being the light. Always, the moths follow the light. Light does not chase moths. So, thank you for being the moth, and I think this is your divine appointment to do this. For love of all children. Thank you. Now, here's my comment. Let me talk about, uh, people who had booed a speaker who talked about abortion. Let me tell you the fact, I myself, including all of you, no one enjoys having an abortion. Matter of fact, no one wants to see innocent puppies or kittens being killed. Nobody. That's for fact. Everyone loves innocent babies, no matter who they are. And I do. I love all innocent babies, no matter what, who they are. Okay? Now, I remember, uh, yes, I do look old. I might be, yes, I am old, unfortunately. Only thing that's working maybe is my brain, I need, the rest of parts are replaced, yes, probably that's right. But I do remember when I had conference calls, I was never made the calls, appointments by myself. The teachers requested my parents must be attended. And these conference calls were mostly negative, bad. Um, my shortcomings were revealed, but sometimes it was positive. There were improvements and there were good news. But regardless, whenever there was a conference call at school, my parents were involved, whether it was good or bad, on my side, it didn't matter. Because in the end, everything got much better after that moment. So, I would strongly support parental engag- engagement. And yes, I agree with the Assemblymen. It's about our time, our parents to get involved and take back public education. What we have is incompetent Sacramento politicians and brainwashed activists running this state and these public schools on our taxpayers' money. And this is a time, and this is the movement that we're starting from Chino Valley, to take it back. So, thank you for our thousands of, of parents who's involved tonight attending this meeting to, to bring back our common sense and not being bullied by the nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Na. Mr. Cruz?
You know, I've been, um, watching the hysteria being lodged against this resolution, President Shaw. AB thirteen fourteen, parental rights. Oppusers say it's anti-LGBTQ because somehow including parents in the lives of their minor sons or daughters is detrimental to the child. If you look at the opposed media posts, they supporting, AB thirteen fourteen is supporting hate, but they don't explain how the hate manifests itself. They say children won't be, won't feel safe if parents know too much about them, but they don't say how, nor do they offer a solution to that supposed gap that exists. Instead, they push to widen the gap. If you saw the April second post from our school, such, such this thing, I don't know what it is. Not once do they mention the importance of parents and family. They do however mention students and teachers' rights. Well, guess what? Our sons and daughters are more than students, they're part of our families for a lifetime, not just kindergarten through twelfth grade. By the way, do the opposers mean to include the same-sex parents in our community? Who absolutely want to know if their kids are struggling with gender identity? Or do the opposers only mean to attack male and female parents? Or is it really just another sneaky attack on Christian values masquerading as protecting the trans community? To oppose a bill that seeks to bring families together and open up doors of understanding through communication is nothing short of diabolical. Sadly, this anti-parent movement seeks to destroy and minimize the essential role that parents have in the lives of their minor sons and daughters. When that happens, we know that things have gotten out of control. And I want to say one thing, one thing that I just heard disturbing, I wasn't gonna bring this up, but I have to bring this up, and that is a child transitioning to, uh, you know, from, from male to female. I heard, and it, it is quite disturbing, because I had to think about this, that cutting the genitals, doing all that, that they insert a cone, and, and that cone has to be inserted inside of the male that has transitioned into a female, and that cone has been in there for years. And I, I was thinking, why is that the case? And it just dawned on me, it's like a pierced ear, that i- if you remove the earring, it'll seal. So, so a male that's transitioning from a child, from, from a female, they have to create a cavity inside and they place a cone in there for years, so you'll have that opening. I mean, this is so disturbing what we're doing. This is almost like the Salem Rich Trials, and when they look back in history, they're gonna say, "What a bunch of..." It, it's gonna be really nuts, what we have done to our kids. And I'm gonna say one thing, when it comes to, there was no issues with, with drag shows. There was no issues about sex changes. It was when you, when you brought it to our kids, right down there. And let me tell you, our kids, to normalize this stuff, to, to wire our kids' brains through TV, social media, music, color, i- it's affecting the child's development. And it's cultivating this, this normalcy and this desire, this, this desire of doing this thing. And let me tell you, it undermines the family movement, but it's worse than that. It undermines a whole humanity. That you, you lose the family unit, you lose everything, you lose humanity, and that's what we're going towards. We have some bad characters that want to destroy America and the whole entire world and trans, trans, transitioned into something that is totally upside down from male to female, female to male, just upside down, right to the point that you have women's rights moving towards transgender rights, that women's rights are just completely dissolving from sports, everything else is completely falling apart. But I will assure you, there's a lot of states that will protect the values of this God-given country.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Uh, Mr. Bridge, here.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
If I hear any more comments, we will have you removed, so please, this is a public meeting and we need to keep the comments out of the audience. If you want to talk again, I will have you removed, because I'm gonna run a meeting that is very orderly, thank you. Everybody, please.
Before I, I continue, if you remember at the last meeting, I mentioned that I probably wasn't going to be here tonight because of this particular week being a big week in the, um, in the Christian calendar and many mainline Protestant churches, of which I, one, has services going on right now. In fact, that's where my wife is, and I'm not there, because this is an important issue to me. And I have some questions on this, on this bill. For example, it doesn't mention anything about eighteen-year-olds. They're adults. They supposed to still be reported to their parents? The way it sounds like, that's just a question I have. What if there's no support at home? Uh, we, the assumption seems to be made that all we have to do is tell the parents and everything's gonna be fine, it's gonna be like Father Knows Best or My Three Sons, I Know I'm Dating Myself. But it's, in some cases, it's not. What if a child has heard their parents complain about people in society that are like this, and then is afraid to go home and for the fear that that same parent will take it out on them because of what they've said and what they've heard? What if the three-day letter causes the abuse? You send, it says to send home notification within three days. First of all, who's supposed to send it home? The teacher, the principal, doesn't say? The district, the superintendent? How are we supposed to know? So, there's, there's a question. There are just too many questions, and by the way, I, I did read the bill. There's the ledge info. It's all in one particular section of, of Ed Code fifty-one, one oh one, subsection seventeen, and then it's under AB, and then point three in there, it says, "Promote communication and positive relationships with parents." Is that gonna happen a hundred percent of the time? Can you guarantee that it's gonna happen a hundred percent of the time? No, you can't. And when you can't guarantee something a hundred percent of the time, I'm not gonna put my vote somewhere where it could actually cause harm. If it just causes harm to one student, that's one student, too many. So, I know that there've been a lot of comments, and I don't need to turn this into a sermonet, so I won't. But, uh, you can go ahead and pass the resolution, but you'll do it without my vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge. The light system is not, it's not working.
All right. I just wanna make a couple of comments on, on, um, some of the things from tonight, and, it really comes down into what role do you want parents to play? What is our role as parents with our children? And who has the right to define that? If I look, you know, we, we've had a lot of comments as to what the school board's role in that is. The school board has a policy, and it's sixty, sixty-twenty A. The Board of Education recognizes the parent guardians are their children's first and most influential teachers, and that sustained parent guardian independent of the education, or, I'm sorry, involvement in the education of their children constitutes greatly the student's achievement and positive school environment. As a district, how do we involve parents for the success of their children? And as we continue to move forward, that success becomes more universal and, and in, that involvement becomes in more ways. And how we implement that will play out. And I do want to make a couple of comments on some things. There was a comment that says, "A yes vote tells the students that they don't belong." I, I do want to disagree with that. You do belong. A yes vote doesn't say anything against your lifestyle. A yes vote speaks loudly as to what the parent involvement should be. We've heard a lot of comments of how a parent's involvement will endanger the student. And, um, I, this is something to consider, and I think Mr. Bridge, um, argued that point as to, will that create that environment? And that is, that is a question, that is a concern. Does that create an environment in the home that is negative? What better way to monitor that situation than to have the school involved, which it already would be? If we never give the opportunity for the parents to respond positively, we have categorically eliminated that parent from being able to support their child. We heard a comment that says, "We see them, we support them, and we love them for who they are." How as a community can we not give the parent the opportunity to do just that? And if that child doesn't receive it in the home and the school is already involved, they already have a built-in support structure to then assist that child that doesn't get the positive reinforcement from home during that time? We have a mechanism in our, in our culture that would, that monitors that, that has children that are not well taken care of in their home, that those children can be removed from the home. But that is a process that that parent has to be found guilty, like any, anything else in our culture and our, in our United States of America before that is done. And I think that, um, we need to afford that opportunity to the parents to respond positively in that child's life, and to love them through their transition and to love them for who they are. And having this mechanism, I think, um, supports a holistic approach to that, that has a failsafe already built in, that the school is already aware of, and in the absence of that, can step in and give support to that child and involve further, um, social, uh, whether it be counseling or social groups to support that child in the absence of the parent chooses not to support their child. So, I think that doing something like this absolutely would care for that student in a manner that we are not doing now. And for that, I would support this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. I wrote some things down because I know that, um, the public, some in the public like to twist my words around, and just like this bill, I'm glad that you, um, our Assemblyman Bill Esseli had read it into the record, because it's very important that, um, people understand what this bill is, and they understand that involving a parent isn't hating anybody. That's never been about hate, it's actually about love because we see their struggles. Um, so, for once and for all, I would like to state something for the record, my stance on a few issues as well. It, I wrote it down to make sure that I'm clear, and again, not misinterpreted. I have never hated nor stated that I hate anybody, including anybody in the LGBTQ community, and those lies need to stop here. I have family members that, that identify being in that community. You think that they, that I hate them? Do they think that I hate them? Absolutely not. That's horrible and disgusting that you're going around telling them that I hate them. These are children, so who's really hurting the children if you're going around telling them that adults are, are hating them? I don't want any child out of our schools. I want all kids to have a fair and equal education and have a positive school experience, all of them. I got elected because I was the parent's voice, and I continue to be the parent's voice. We need to be pro, we need to be pro-parent. Pro-parent, okay? That's what we need to do. And if the parents are hurting the child, then, then there needs to be systems in place to help that child and get them the help that they need. No one ever disputed that. I love all children, no matter what their gender identity is. Don't tell them I don't love them, I do, thank you. And I will not participate in these tactics used by grown adults to separate our community. My love for our children is why I do what I do. I got voted here because I love children. I also don't have hate for anyone in the LGBTQ community. My friends identify in that community as well. So, regardless of what you want to go and post on public social media, that's actually hurting somebody. That's hate. Those are lies. I definitely don't want our kids bullied and feeling unsafe as you are making them feel. I do believe that taking out parents is causing more harm and pain for our children, and this is not the solution. Regarding this proposed bill and resolution, it's been a while since I've seen any common sense bills that were not on the defense on, coming from Sacramento, that are providing support and tools to parents seeking- support and tools to parents seeking help if their child needs help. Finally, we have one that makes sense, and it's not a surprise that it's being twisted and publicized as something it's not. Our children are innocent and need their parents and guardians, and 100% need them to have a healthy relationship with their schools. Keeping secrets from parents is not the way. It's not the state's or school district's job, including mine, as a school board member, to determine if they're better for the, if they are better for the child than their very own guardians and parents. These are children, and they count on their parents, and we need to remember that. Behavior at school can be a cry for help during a hard time, or even worse, a mental health crisis. Restricting communication between a parent and the school based on a privacy of a 12-year-old child is dangerous. Let me remind you, it's very dangerous. These kids are struggling. Developing ways to support students who fear talking to their parents should be our goal. This is what we should be talking about. We should be talking about, how do we bridge the gap? How do we give parents resources? Why aren't we focusing on resources for the parents if they're struggling with their kids saying that they identify as gay? That's where your focus and energy should be, not going and hating on a group that's trying to hate, love all children. Yeah, okay. Developing ways to support students who fear taking to their parents should be our goal, not further alienating them. I can say with my own children, I work directly with her teachers and counselors in partnership to help her in ways that my husband and I cannot. But let me repeat that, I work directly with them on her struggles, and we work together as a team. All kids develop feelings, and I'm not saying all kids, but other kids do develop feelings of suicide and everything else, whether they're part of the LBGD community. And we need to be able to have a relationship with their teachers and their counselors to be able to help them, because there is things that I cannot help her as a parent that they can. And as far as the other issue, one we're yell out, please security escort them out. They're disrupting a public meeting. And as far as the other issues, I do not apologize that I, as a parent, not a board member, fought for and stood up for our girls in sports and bathrooms, because it's common sense that one person's right would not take away the rights from another. I had conversations, and I seek solutions for those things still. I'm not sitting here being quiet about it. As far as our band, we're seeking solutions. As far as the other issues that you guys brought up, special ed, guess who's making a committee with our school district? We are providing solutions, because that's what I was voted to do. Provide solutions for our students, and it includes the parents. I'll leave you with this. I'm grateful someone in Sacramento is doing something to repair the damage California has allowed. I am glad someone, regardless of the gaslighting and fear tactics used, is brave enough to stand up for their families. I know all too well the threats and the hate that comes from a group that spews "Don't hate on these kids." You're doing exactly, and you're showing them exactly what you're saying not to have on them. Shame on you. And as I attend more and more of our district events, last night at the choir showcase, I was holding back tears. You know why? Because I was watching this excitement in the parents' eyes, seeing their child excel and do something was beautiful. Even more amazing was the kids. They were focused on the audience, trying to find where their parents were. And here we are, developing things in Sacramento to take parents out of the equation? Shame on Sacramento, and I will stand firm on that. They need us, and they long for us to guide them and protect them. Furthermore, I seen a friend of mine's child who struggles in crowds do an absolutely amazing job in front of so many people, and it's not because of anything else than the parent working in collaboration with us. As hard as we make it in the school system, she still does everything she can to work in collaboration with the school district to allow her child to shine, and boy, did he shine. We need to stop making it hard to work with parents. Stop building walls. Why is Sacramento not putting other things in place that actually build the gap between parents and their child and the school district? That gives supports to parents so they can deal with the situations they may feel is a challenge? Put things in place if your child was hurt or abused. I was an abused child. I still long for my mom who died at nine. What about you? Would you really want your child to hide something from you? Every single one of you in this room, would you really want your child to hide something from you? Yes, children are scared. My own child is scared to tell me that they've done something wrong because of the consequences. But that doesn't mean I'm gonna beat her, abuse her, or kick her out on the streets. How dare you even think that it's the school district or Sacramento's job to do that? It's not. Ask yourself, especially those parents that self-label themselves as "safe with me." God forbid something happened to a child and possibility of a parent being involved was not an option, because we think school districts and states know better than a parent? Will you be at that, will you be with that parent at the child's graveside mourning the loss of their child whom they've never known the struggles, but you did and did nothing about it? I will leave it at that, because parents need to be involved, and we need to find solutions on how to do that. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any... Any opposed?
Opposed.
Preferential?
No.
The motion passes with a vote of four to one. The next item is...
And that's the solution.
I get it, I get that. But I'm not talking about this, I'm talking about you. No, keep it up. That's what I've taught myself.
Why don't we have lunch?
Why don't you write your history for me? You can get your account, like, write the author. It can always be amended if you have a different secretary. I always recommend, like, when we don't see something, that's why we work together to get something, a lot of it together.
But we can have lunch. We bring your mom, and we can have lunch. It'd kinda cool. What else on this, right?
Oh, there's too many people.
Uh, Donnie, can you grab Mr. Nowery? Um, oh, there he is, and then Mr. Monroe. Hey, how are you?
Good for Speedy.
That's your son, Kiki?
Number one, tenth grader, Chino High.
I'm just a dictator.
No, you're not a dictator. Whatever, you're giving them a great environment that they can grow.
When I started, you know, I rose in a race.
Well, you went to college.
And why do you think Rose was so good? Parents were involved.
But, I'm trying to make sure my kids follow the different path.
Yeah, you too. Thank you guys for coming, and thank you for speaking.
You did good, too.
Oh, that's right.
Obviously, they talk. You're very resourceful. You know how to find a seed. Did it take a long time for you to find your own job?
It took a long time for me to find the job that I'm interested in.
There's a lot of hard work. It's easy to find.
Yeah, I mean, there's comparable companies that have completely legitimate, like, from home to state.
I would love to do something like that. I would love when I retire, just do that.
Yeah, that's pretty hardcore, huh?
And it was one to two thousand, nineteen thirty?
I think you're right.
How are you doing?
Bye, we'll see you later.
I know, I heard it was pretty crazy.
One second, we're waiting to find Mr. Monroe, his items appear that he's still here. Okay. Okay, while we wait for Mr. Monroe, we will go to item. Okay. Okay. Okay, it's recommended that the Board of Education conduct a public hearing to receive community input on the request to name or dedicate a facility at Chino High School after Frank Elder and Joe Murillo. I now open the public hearing at eight ten P M. Pat, do we have any speakers? I now close the public hearing at eight ten P M. The next item is. Two B two. Public hearing on the request to the California Department of Education for a waiver of certain procedural requirements of the education code related to the potential sale of a surplus real estate property and adoption of resolution twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six. Authorization to seek a California Department of Education waiver of certain procedures for the sale of surplus real property. Recommend that the Board of Education. A, conduct a public hearing on the request to the California Department of Education for a waiver of certain procedural requirements of the education code related to the potential sale of surplus real property and. B, adopt a resolution twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six. Authorization to seek a California Department of Education waiver of certain procedures for the sale of surplus real property. I now open the public meeting at eight eleven P M. Pat, do we have any speakers? I now close the public hearing at eight eleven P M. We will now take a vote on part B of this item. May I have a motion?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by, did we have, Mr. Cruz? Um, comments, questions, and discussion? I'm not sure the light's working, guys, so you might just want to give me your eyes if you want to. It's working now? No comments. Let's take a vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Preferential? The motion passes with a vote of five to zero, that concludes the action items. We are now on to consent, Pat, are there any speakers in consent items? Board members, do you have any polls? Mr., um, Bridge?
No polls.
Mr. Cruz?
No polls.
Mr. Monroe?
No polls.
Mr. Nau?
I have no polls.
And I have no polls. For the remainder of the consent items, may I have a motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The mo, the motion preferential? The motion passes with a vote of five to zero. We are now on to information items, are there any? Questions? Seeing that there's none, we're now on to communications. Mr. Bridge?
Yeah, information. I did have a question on information items, so. I just wanted to ask, uh, Dr. Enfield, on the, on the first semester expulsion report, if it was possible to research as to why the, um, expulsions were overturned?
Yeah, that won't be a problem, we can get that, uh, the information on, on the why for all those that were overturned.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that we're, we're good to go, we are now on to communications, Mr. Bridge?
Thank you, just two, uh, two quick things. Uh, Dr. Enfield, I, uh, received an email, and, and you might have as well, about the, uh, um, condition of the, uh, baseball field over at Don Lugo, and I wonder if, uh, if, if what was the concern of that email has been taken care of, or?
Yeah, I already gave that to, uh, Mr. Stratur, and, uh, uh, Mr. Martin's already, uh, working on it.
Okay, very, very good. And, uh, the only other thing that I have is I just wanted to thank the, uh, the chamber and the city of, uh, Chino Hills and, and Chino for the, uh, wonderful luncheon, salute to public safety luncheon yesterday at, uh, at Los Aranos, I attended that, and it was, uh, a very, um, wonderful event, and I just was, uh, pleased to be a part of it, so thank them, thank them for that, and that concludes my comments tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge, Mr. Nau?
Yeah, I have just a couple of quick, uh, comments, too. Um, I had, uh, some discussion with some teachers and some admin, uh, from our schools, where, uh, they had concern with, uh, there's certain, uh, movement from Sacramento again to water down, uh, the quality and, and the value of our high school diplomas. Certain districts would just push graduation rates and, and basically, um. Kids would almost have no efforts of receiving and achieving a high school diplomas, and, uh, it worried some of our admin and, uh, school teachers. So we have to make sure that, uh, we would not follow, uh, those type of movements. That's, could be coming down to us as well. Uh, that's one concern. And, uh, second thing is that, um. You know, it was really good to see our, uh, uh, high school graduates going to, uh, Yale and, and, uh, great universities, but their tuitions are, uh, steadily going up, and some of schools are asking for ninety thousand dollars a year. And if we could, uh, accom- accommodate more college credit courses for our juniors and, and seniors, would be really, really beneficial for our students. Uh, Dr. Enfield, could you look into that?
Yeah, we currently have that, that ability, but we'll continue to, to grow that program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nau. Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Nau does have a good idea. You can make Chino Valley like a J C, a community college. Dual enrollment courses. Oh, yes, also, the County Fish and Game Department at San Bernardino County Regional Park. The twenty twenty-third Fish and Wildlife Festival is on Saturday, June ten, twenty twenty-three, ten A M. to three P M. The ten twenty-three Fish and Wildlife will have a wide range of educational hands on activities like fishing, mountain biking, and archery, as well as conservation of wildlife. This event has a family friend cost of ten dollars to get into Prado Regional Park. Do you think it's possible we could post this on the website? The regional, you know, it's kind of cool, outdoor activities.
Let me take a look at it, and I'll, I'll, we'll see what we can do.
And then, and then, um, we received this email about the funding of. Music and arts, and I, I, I sent it to you. So maybe we should collaborate with the boosters to know, for them to know exactly where all this money's being allocated.
They can talk with their, their, their band directors, because the band directors were involved in that process. Yes, so that was a, w- w- we, we gave every school the opportunity to identify all their needs, and then, uh, we had John Ashby go back out there, Mr. Cruz, to the school sites and worked with them a second time to, uh, go through that, and so they identified all the needs, so the band directors would be very, uh, aware of what they've, uh, identified.
Thank you. And then auti- autism awareness, one in thirty-six in the year twenty twenty-three. And, um, Frank. Frank Rodriguez?
Oh, yeah.
You did a fantastic job. I, I want to share something with you, because, you know, I grew up three sisters, I was the youngest, and they would dress me up, too. And when I was like ten, twelve, I, I was afraid to take off my shirt. But, you know, you know, sometimes I think about these things, if I was living in this time, who knows what would have happened? But see, it didn't really matter what would have happened to me during those times when I was young, because see, I was left alone with friends and all that, and then when I went through puberty, that's how it went, you know? So, but I do, I, I was thinking, I was reflecting what you were saying. I do love one man. I, I really love this man. And that is Jesus Christ. It's in my head. So, yeah, I do. So, thank you, thank you for your well-meaningful thing. My love of my life. And you know something, I was covering her, the Second Amendment, that's your given right, and I would mandatory everybody, law body citizen, to be trained using a gun. Right, Pat? Thank you. Oh, my butt! Poems of a High School Loser. A collection of bad poetry from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety. So, I, I really, I, I think this was so beautifully done, so let me just read one, running. I was running from a shadow, hiding from my fears, lying to myself so I might escape the tears. I locked the door to my safe world and threw away the key. Like toxic smoke, they seeped on through the cracks to torment me. Smoke gets in your eyes, and old songs did explain. I closed my eyes, but clearly saw a portrait of my pain. Dreams turn into nightmares, good turns into bad. If ever you stop running, the truth will drive you mad. So this will go to Chino High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Monroe?
All right, well, I hope everybody had a, uh, good spring break, coming back from that. I do want to thank the, the chamber as well, uh, for the salute to public safety, it's a great event every year, and I can't think of, um, I guess one of the most worthwhile things to appreciate those that put their life on the line and, and give so much to our community to make it safe and, uh, to help those in need. Uh, so thank you for that great event. I was going to piggyback on Mr. Cruz's, uh, the Fish and Wildlife at Prado Park. You know, one of the most underused resources we have is that park. And that Fish and Wildlife event on June tenth is really set up to be educational for, for our kids. So as our community is going to be off on, on a summer break, uh, for those of you parents out there, you know, take a look at that event and going out there, they're going to have the ability, if they've never fished before, to, to learn how to fish, they're going to stalk the lake out there, really be a great event for your kids to attend. Also learn conserva- conservation, a lot of things in nature that'll be out there, and how to, how to take care of our, our lovely planet that we have and our great outdoors. So, please look at that as a great, uh, summer event for your children. I want to wish those Happy Easter coming forward, and I do want to mention April is, uh, National Donate Life Month. So right now, there's over a hundred thousand people waiting for a life-saving transplant on a list, and if you've never thought about listing yourself as an organ donor, please take a look at that and, uh, talk with your families and, and do so. Um, if the unfortunate event comes that, uh, that we pass, uh, what a great, uh, silver lining to that cloud to be able to affect so many people's lives with the great, uh, gift of life in, uh, giving your organ, uh, organ and tissue donation, so please consider that and, and look at that this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe, Doctor, um, Superintendent Dr. Enfield?
To our seniors, I just want to remind you, the, uh, senior scholarship applications are, are, are opened and will be accepted through April twenty-seventh. And then also our military salute application honoring our se- our seniors entering the armed forces after graduations will be accepted through May fifth. Please get those applications in so we can recognize our students at our May eighteenth board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Enfield, and I will try to make it quick, I know it's been a long night, um, I would also like to piggyback the Fish and Wildlife event, and I'm sure if we have openings, um, me and a couple of board members might attend that. Um, I also want to thank the chamber for the salute to public safety event, it was absolute incredible event just to watch and, and honor those that, um, put their, put their lives at danger to make sure that our lives are safe, and I, furthermore, with public safety, I also want to thank our own security guards, they endure a lot on the campus and in our board meetings. And I think it, it's very important to, 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 to just reach out if you see them and thank them for the job they do, it is not easy, trust me, if you walk those campuses during lunch, a lot of things go on, and they do this every single day. And these board meetings tonight, they kept it under control, um, with, with whatever they were given tonight, they were not, I'm sure there's no special training on crazy board meetings, but we thank you, guys, you guys are amazing. Um, I also want to thank, um, the site visits that we had, Dr. Enfield and I, during this last, well, I guess, week, because we were on spring break. Um, Eagle Canyon, I absolutely agree, your library is amazing, and we want to make sure that it stays as beautiful as it is when it goes through some renovations, um, I want to thank Rolling Ridge and Hidden Trails as well, um, we'll have Hidden Trails back again to honor them for the award that they, um, they earned. Um, I also want to say, if anybody has not went to those choir showcases or a choir event, please go, seeing the words come out of these little children's mouth, there was one song about how we're all one, we're all one voice, and I literally started crying, it was so beautiful. And, um, I just encourage you to go to those things, because it gives you a different perspective on just the unity and, and the, the importance of a parent and a child. Um, with that, I want to thank all of our speakers, um, uh, your voices are important, um, and, and just try to, what I, what I do want to say is try to reach out and try to work with people, like, I, I know, even though Sacramento makes some bad bills, I myself am trying to work with other elective politicians to work on things, I mean, that's important that they hear our voice, to hear, if they don't hear our voice, then there's no other, other option than to do what they got to do, you got to make sure that you stand, and if you don't have somebody to stand, make sure, um, if you can't stand, then make sure that you do, find somebody that will, I think that's very important. Um, I want to thank everybody for their hard work tonight, um, our staff for staying late, I know you want to get to your families, and with that, I adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-six P M.